Hello, Halliston. Welcome to another edition of Just Thinking. I'm John Cronin. Thank you for joining us. This afternoon, we're going to have a conversation with Halliston's newest town manager, Frank Gervazio. Hi, Frank. How you doing?
Doing well. Thanks for having me.
Excellent. So, we're going to have a chance to talk to Frank about this fall's upcoming town meeting. As folks in Halliston know, we meet twice a year, usually in the spring, to conduct general business associated with the town's budget. And then again, in the fall, to clean up some business and look forward to some capital and other related activities. So, we thought it would be important to give folks an insight into what the warrant includes as of today for this coming October 20th town meeting. Frank's going to go through the warrant with us. It's not a deep warrant, is it, Frank?
It is not.
How many warrant articles are we looking at?
Right now, just under 20. And so, I think that Halliston's taking it easy on me for my first one.
Well, let's hope so. I thought we'd just go topically around the areas of interest and starting off with the beginning. First, let folks know if they're interested in attending, what time they have to come, and what kind of service you might be providing to citizens.
Sure. So, town meetings, October 20th at the high school, 7:00 PM. There will be childcare available shortly before, so you can get there, drop the kids off, and come on in and vote. Any questions about voter registration or anything like that, please feel free to reach out to the town clerk's office ahead of time. But I'm excited.
So, Frank, as we look at the warrant, has the select board taken a final act on it? Where does it stand as a document?
So, the select board met Monday, the 29th, to basically do its first review of the "final warrant." At their meeting on October 6th, it will be finalized, and at that point, we will post sort of the posted version of it. And shortly thereafter, the select board's comments will be issued as well. We'll hand it off to the finance committee, and I expect at the finance committee's meeting on October 7th, their comments will be finalized as well. And all of that should be available online shortly. The postcards will go out in the mail with a QR code that'll bring you right to the town's website with all the town meeting information.
So, the notice to the town folk will go out after the finance committee meeting on the 7th? So, people should expect something certainly by the middle of October.
Yes, certainly.
Well, in advance of the meeting. Excellent. All right. So, let's get started. I thought we'd begin with the first article, which is known as the General Stabilization Fund. The current article shows $150,000 going in to fund the General Stabilization Fund. Little update on what this money's for, where this fund stands, and just tell people what to expect out of this one, Frank.
Sure. So, if you don't mind, I'll take a step back for one second and just explain sort of what free cash is, because we're spending a lot of it. And it's kind of an odd term. So, at this point in the year, we're looking back at the prior fiscal year, which ended in June, and we're trying to figure out what's left, what money maybe we appropriated that maybe we didn't spend quite as much as we expected, or what revenues came in a little bit higher than we expected. And that's sort of a simplified version of it. But as you alluded to, you know, in this October town meeting is typically when we take up some of the articles that appropriate some of that free cash. It's really meant to spend on one-time purposes. You certainly want to hire new staff or, you know, start a new program with, or don't want to, excuse me, hire new staff or start a new program or something like that with it. It's usually meant to, you know, build reserves and spend on one-time capital investments, things like that.
Or clean up FY '26 things that might not be sure.
True. Also true.
Unpaid and stuff like that.
Right. Yep. Got it. In this case, we're putting it into our General Stabilization Fund, which you might hear, he referred to as sort of a rainy day fund. If there's some sort of major economic downturn or emergency that's unforeseen that comes up, and the town needs to sort of break the piggy bank to cover the shortfall, that money is there. The town also has a very strong financial policies that sort of guide the ideal balance for this fund. So, usually, it's, in Halliston's case, it's between 12% and 18% of our operating expenditures. This deposit of an additional $150,000 will bring us to just about 14%, which is where it was previously. So, we're just about sort of doing a maintenance deposit, I guess, if you want to call that.
Have been any draws on that fund?
There have not recently. I believe in the past couple, within the past couple of years, actually, there was a withdrawal for special education costs. That was prior to my tenure, but I believe that was maybe 2023-ish at the annual town meeting in May.
So, it's taking some of our surplus, putting away for future dates, good business practice. It's adhering to the town's policy, and it sounds like a right smack dab in the middle of our set goal, which it sounds pretty stable and responsible. So, good job there. So, we'll go on to the Pension Stabilization Fund. I won't read the whole thing, so I'll let you explain to the listeners what this is for.
Sure. So, a few years ago, I believe it was in May of 2021, the town established this fund basically to start socking some money away to potentially start offsetting some of the assessments that we get for funding our portion of the unfunded liability with the Middlesex County Retirement System. So...
Just real briefly, this is not to be confused with OPEB.
Correct. This is purely for pension, not for retiree healthcare benefits. So, most of our full-time employees are mandated to be members of the Middlesex County Retirement System. And again, to sort of fund our portion of the unfunded liability. Every year, the town is assessed a payment to fund that liability. And just to give you some context, that number for last year was around $3 million bucks. So, even the slightest fluctuation, 5%, 10% in that assessment, obviously puts strain on our operating budget, our ability to grow our operating budget. So, this fund is there basically to start offsetting potentially some of those increases in those assessments that will get down the road. The funding deadline for the, for all of the pension systems statewide is 2040. The state is actually encouraging folks to do it by 2036. So, as that date draws nearer, we're expecting those assessments to increase more steeply. And again, this money is there sort of to maybe help smooth that out over time.
Yeah. And I believe some of that is also tied to not just the state's guidelines from PERIC, but our audits. They want to see these kind of liabilities attended to, funded, if you will, to adhere to the payment schedule that's in front of us, so you don't get caught with a large unfunded liability at the end.
Right. Right.
Yeah, no, that's definitely something I recall putting together with Travis some years ago. And I believe, once we did that, it was sort of a trigger to help us get to that AAA reading. So, yeah, good job. We're looking at a capital expenditure fund deposit. This is really the meat of it, Frank, isn't it? When you think of town meeting, you said one-time spending. You've got to buy things, equipment, things like that. Article 3 is looking to fund $1.85 million. We'll get into the details in a second. But how does that compare to past years? And a little bit about what this cap fund does.
Sure. So, I'd say it's about even with prior years. I think it's generally fluctuated between $1 to $2 million. In addition to these funds, we're actually, we're planning to turn back nearly $1 million from the Woodland Street project back into the Capital Expenditure Fund, so that those funds will be, you know, available for other projects.
And that's because you've got money from the state.
Correct. So, there was $1 million appropriated by town meeting. You'll have to forgive me. I forget the year.
It was a couple of years ago.
A couple of years ago, to fund that project. We ended up getting grants, so we barely had to tap that $1 million. That money can now be spent for other purposes. So, you know, one of the first things that I do is, and this is true in Halliston and my prior job in Medfield, is I take our five-year capital plan, which I think we're going to, we're going to talk about in a little bit, and figure out, you know, how much are we looking at in terms of stuff that we're trying to replace in the near future, new investments that we're trying to make. And that's, you know, a very common best practice, I think, that you'd find in most towns. But we think that putting in this $1.85 million for now, in addition to that 900 or so thousand that we're expecting to turn back, puts us in a pretty good spot.
Is there any money in the fund right now?
Yes. After...
Don't mean to put you on the spot. It's not necessarily a dollar amount, but it's a, it's a fund that traditionally we put money in. We don't spend it all, though. And so, there's always a running balance, right?
There is. And in fact, I talked about our financial policies previously. One section of our financial policies basically states that our capital expenditure fund should, the balance should be no less than 2% of our operating expenditures. So, that is another sort of guiding principle that we have when we're forecasting out sort of the capital demands that we can anticipate within the next, you know, three, four, five years.
I've always viewed this fund as sort of the secret sauce, you know? We all pay taxes. We want to see a return on the taxes. We want to see our roads well-maintained, our parks well-maintained, our vehicles that we use, you know, up to date and safe to operate. When our free cash or our one-time monies dry up, that's what suffers the most, you know? In communities who lose the ability to fund those items, the infrastructure and the service delivery starts to suffer. I think we've been very lucky in Halliston over the last several years to have this kind of money coming in and going out. It's a nice level amount that people can rely on for these kind of expenditures, which we're going to get to later on, right? There's a, there's a whole detailed list of these things that the town will vote on.
Yes.
We'll get to those in just a second. When we structure the warrant, Frank, you have something to do with placing the articles strategically within, for a purpose, right? You want to talk a little bit about your thought process of like, where does this article go? Where does that article go? And how's that play?
Sure. So, I always like to think about sort of getting the housekeeping stuff done first. So, some of these appropriations that we're going to walk through, replenishing stabilization funds, capital funds, pension stabilization fund, our programmatic stabilization fund that we were going to talk about, sort of getting that, getting those things taken care of. Also, just sort of logistically, you know, you want to have your funding in before you want to get to the following articles when you talk about funding out. You know, you always want to be prepared. You never know what's going to happen on town meeting floor. So, logistically, that's how I think about it. And then, you know, some of the things that might garner further discussion, because, you know, some of these things are fairly routine, I guess, especially in Halliston's case. Those would typically take place after. But...
Are you going to be talking with the board next week about looking at a consent agenda to maybe bundle some of these articles for a quick vote?
Yes. So, we discussed that at the last meeting. I'm not sure there was too much. I mean, we, you mentioned previously, it's a fairly light warrant agenda-wise. So, I'm not sure if that consent agenda is going to be too robust, but I think that's going to be finalized at the October 6th meeting. Yes.
As folks walk in and they grab their warrant, they're going to observe the ones we just talked about. Articles 1 through 4 and 5 are, just as Frank described, fund transfers, lining up the funding for later consideration of spending. That leads us to article number 5, which is a transfer of funds for Department of Revenue Recertification. This is a kind of a cyclical thing. Probably every five years ago, the Board of Assessors talks to the select board, and in this case, they found some money. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure, they did. So, as you mentioned, every five years, basically, the Department of Revenue mandates that we reevaluate all of our properties. You know, the state is ultimately the one who oversees how we reevaluate and evaluate all of our real property in town. So, we, every five years, we go through this very intensive process to look at all of our parcels. That typically involves bringing someone in from the outside, a consultant, to assist. There was a figure built into the budget, and that was sort of baked into the fiscal year '26 spending assumptions. The bids went out, and unfortunately, they came in about $50,000 higher than anticipated, which was obviously a very big surprise. But there wasn't a whole lot we could do about it, because this is, again, something that's required by the state that we do. So, the Board of Assessors looked at their own reserves, their assessor's overlay, which I'm sure we could do a whole other show on.
It wouldn't be quite as exciting as this one.
Probably not. You never know.
No matter who does it.
It's one of those things. But basically, they, knowing that funds are tied up elsewhere, they voted to release this reserve for this purpose. If the money is not spent, it just flows to free cash, which we already talked about. But this really is a wise use of these funds.
Yep. You got to sweep those funds when you realize you don't need them. All right, great. Moving right along. Article 6, Town Clerk's Salary Adjustment. I have some thoughts on this, but I'd let you dive into it first, Frank. A little bit about why this is before the voters here in October.
Sure. So, I think, you know, back in the spring, there was obviously a lot of transition going on with Travis Hearn leaving and...
Who? Who's that?
I think going into the town meeting, there was just, you know, between DPW and Travis's departure, there was a lot going on. So, I think there was a discussion between the town clerk and the select board about, and the finance committee about a salary adjustment for the town clerk. I think between the select board and others, there was a decision about possibly waiting until the fall. So, the fall is here, and so, the town clerk has presented some data that, you know, she thinks best represents some of her peers, and has made that request for a salary adjustment that she thinks is, you know, comparable.
So, the town clerk's an elected position, but the department head too. So, why is she, or what, not her, why is the town clerk on a schedule like this and not within a budget like everybody else? Why is she different?
So, state law actually mandates that we vote for all elected official salaries. So, the town clerk is the only person with a, excuse me, only elected official with a salary. I think up until recently, even select board members and members of the Board of Assessors had small stipends of...
Grandfather stipends, yep.
Yeah. And even those small amounts had to be approved by town meeting, excuse me. And so, the town clerk is sort of the last position standing. So, this is actually an article that is approved every May as part of the town meeting warrant.
Separately from...
Correct.
Like, so it's like the department head for Department of Public Works or the library or whatever, their salaries are part of a budget discussion. So, when you vote for the town clerk's budget, this particular item has to be funded separately.
Correct.
And approved separately, more importantly. Okay. So, there's a distinction there.
Yes, there is.
And it's the only one in town?
Yes. And they, so they aren't on the, the town clerk isn't on the sort of the class and compensation schedule that is also part of the warrant, sort of a standalone position approved in that way.
And so, observing here, it looks like a straight-up $10,000 pay increase. Tell us a little bit about, you know, what kind of justification or information has come forth to justify this for the voters on October 20th?
Sure. So, as I said, the town clerk put together sort of a salary survey of our, you know, who she would consider our peer towns, and came up with the figure based on that analysis, based on where the market stands. I then independently did my own analysis, which I'd be happy to get more into, but basically...
That's because you don't have an assistant, right?
That's true.
We'll talk about that later. I'll get that later. You're doing it all right now.
I actually, I actually came up with a similar figure. We may have been a few hundred dollars off. And so, that's sort of the data behind the request.
Yeah. What little I know about a town clerk job, my current boss is a former city clerk, but a lot's changed in that role. And I think somebody who attends town meeting, who's casually interested in town government, might recognize that the last, oh, I don't know, five years or so since COVID, the demands for a clerk, whether it's mail-in voting or the different types of voting options, have produced a new demand on this role. Is that accurate?
I think that's fair to say, yeah.
And possibly, as a result, driving up the demand for town clerks and salaries they're in, which changes your market.
Yes, it does. And we're seeing that a lot in the municipal world, but yeah.
Well, I mean, I happen to have some understanding of what's going on here, and having looked at it myself, I've seen the market shift dramatically. This funding level for this kind of a position, to me, is something that I would call a ground ball, and I'm hoping the voters see it that way. It's relatively straightforward. And why are we doing it in October, I guess, is the question. You try to answer there, which is, there was a lot going on in the spring, and because we have to treat this compensation different than department heads, it was appropriate to bring it forth in a quieter time, a more stable time of the fall. This particular request would be retroactive, though. Is that right?
Correct. That's the way the article's written.
So, we're looking to make a correction effective July 1 that, according to you and the research you've done, brings it to market minimum? Where would this number bring the compensation to?
So, I think there were five or six towns that identified as Halliston's peers. And the way that I did it was, and I can't unfortunately speak to how Liz did hers, but just the way that I know that I did mine, I looked at the towns immediately around us, and then the towns immediately around those towns. I think geography is always a big part of class and comp studies. And then I went through those towns and figured out which are similar to Halliston in sort of like the town clerk sense. So, number of precincts, voting centers, population, those types of things. And of those, the five or six that I identified, I think the figure that the town clerk had proposed, roughly 104, 105,000, was sort of the average of those five or six, and then maybe a little bit above the median.
She's elected, but not all clerks are elected.
That is true.
Does that matter in your analysis when you're looking at the numbers? Was there any distinction?
There was no distinction that I can recall. I did include it as sort of a data point, but I can't recall that being something that stood out amongst the, amongst the results.
Okay. So, what we're looking at is an Article 6, an adjustment effective July 1 for the clerk, who's elected to a market-competitive salary based on town administrator, town manager analysis that found some comparable communities. I'm hoping voters see it my way. This is a ground ball. So, we'll see how it goes on the 20th. Moving on, you have some more salary or compensation-related things here. Article 7 is a job reclassification adjustment. Looks like there's something going on. I know a lot about these compensation grades, but having been part of the thing that created it. But tell me quickly, why is the assistant town clerk, excuse me, town accountant getting a grade change?
Sure. So, basically, we, just during my transition, I was looking at different positions and pay scales and just looking at some of the sort of assistant department heads that are in the finance and, you know, related functions. This one jumped out to me. And so, I figured, you know, while we were doing some other, trying to get through some other, you know, class and comp-related things, this would be a good one to include for the fall warrant.
As I look at it, Frank, is this position occupied?
It is.
Okay. So, will this person receive a compensation correction similar to the clerk retroactively? Or is this looking forward? How does that play with the current compensation?
This would look forward. It wouldn't be a jump like, as is proposed for the town clerk. If that person hits their sort of work anniversary, there would be an additional step increase. But, you know, I would imagine that'd be in the neighborhood of maybe $1,000 to $2,000.
I see. But it seeks to retroactively apply the grade of 600 to this role?
Correct.
Okay, good. So, it's similar to the Article 6 in that we're doing some compensation correction here for market-based needs. Okay, got it. On to the fiscal year '26 budget adjustments. Cleanup, IL-4. KEETTEC, go ahead.
So, this actually, this article would actually only be necessary should Article, you're going to have to forgive me, Article 6, the town clerk's salary adjustment, would be approved. So, if there is a retroactive pay adjustment for the town clerk, you know, we seek to find those funds elsewhere to pay for it. So, the KEETTEC assessment that we received for fiscal year '26 is actually going down $30,000. So, we know that that, you know, there'll be $30,000 in that line item that we could move. And so, that seemed like the lowest of the hanging fruit. And so, in order to fund that adjustment, should town meeting approve it, that's where we'd recommend transferring the funds from to pay for it.
So, thusly, $20,000 would flow to the general fund?
Correct.
Got it.
Back to free cash.
Got it. Okay. Excellent. And real quick, to the extent people don't know, the KEETTEC assessment is levied upon the community as a member community within this regional high school, this trade school over in Framingham. It's dependent upon the number of students that we send there every year. So, it sounds like there's been some favorability with regard to enrollment that came our way, and thusly, we get a savings. Got it? Good?
Correct. Yep.
Now, the fund stuff, the capital budget. Let's go back a little bit. Frank, tell the community how the town looks at $2.257 million worth of things and stuff that you want to buy. How do you justify this? And is there a kind of plan that goes behind what gets in, what doesn't?
Yeah. So, it's fairly common, and I think Halliston, you know, coming, I've only been here a few months, but I think Halliston has done a great job of building out its, you know, a five-year capital plan, which again is a sort of time increment that's fairly common. You might see some towns with a 5, 10, or even a 20-year capital plan, but I think 5 is the most realistic number to start with. So, you know, a lot of the things that we have, vehicles, equipment, facilities, roofs...
Real quick, how do you get into the capital plan?
Oh.
Do you knock on the door? Do you send a letter? Do you...
Yes. So, what we do is...
Smile at somebody?
We, Town Hall is a friendly place. So, we actually, like all, you know, government bureaucrats, we have a great form. We give it to our department heads. We ask them to take a look around. What do you think is going to need to be replaced soon? What's a big piece of equipment? What's something in your building? What's a vehicle that you have that you're going to need to replace soon? We're talking about things that are usually over $10,000 to $15,000, have a lifespan of over five years. You know, we're not talking about, you know, we need more supplies, or we need new office chairs, things like that.
Or a new building.
Well, so, basically, we compile all those requests. We put them all up there on the plan. And when it comes actually time to start spending money, we have all this standard set of facts and figures about all the individual requests. We're able to figure out, you know, what's urgent, what's sort of a nice to have.
How do you figure that out?
Well, we have a, I guess we do it a couple of different ways. I rely, or I have relied heavily on our department heads to figure out what their priorities are. The select board, I think, is also eager to hear that advice. We also have the subcommittee of the finance committee that also reviews these and makes their recommendations to town meeting as to what should be funded.
They make a recommendation to town meeting?
Correct. And so, you know, basically, a lot of the things that we have, so you think about, like I said, a vehicle or a piece of equipment or something like that, you know, we can reasonably expect that those will last X amount of years. And so, we can start building a schedule out of, okay, I know that in three to five years, I'm going to need to replace this DPW vehicle or this tractor that we mow the school fields with and the parks with. So, we just basically try to look at everything we have, project out when we think we'll need to replace it, and also think about new stuff that we might want to purchase down the line that might, you know, improve, you know, experience for our residents, maybe save the town some money in operating dollars, or, you know, maybe it's a safety thing. Maybe we need to think about something that might need to be pushed up in the capital plan. Maybe we weren't anticipating funding it until, you know, 2028 or 2029, but all of a sudden, it's broken, and, you know, that delay of service or that safety issue is going to cause a major problem. That happens. And so, then, you know, it might get moved up the list, so to speak.
Looking at the list, there's a, there's a nice balance or synergy to the way you've distributed the funds. Fire department gets a few items, police get a few items, schools get a few items, facilities and so forth, DPW. There's some balance there. If folks are under the impression that we're buying a fire truck or a cruiser, the first question is, what happens to the old one?
Oftentimes, we trade it in. And I will say, it's surprising how little money we can get for a fire truck or, you know, maybe a police car isn't as surprising. But for some of these big pieces of equipment, you know, we're talking maybe a few thousand, tens of thousands, but nothing really, not really a drop in the bucket, I guess, is what I would call it.
Well, we see these prices. I'm looking at the largest item on the list singularly is the engine floor replacement. $723,000. That's the purchase price. That's not anticipating whatever value a trade-in is coming, right?
Correct.
So, if you end up buying the truck for, say, $700,000, where does the $23,000 go?
So, we talked about a little bit earlier the example of the Woodland Street project that we appropriated $1 million for that ended up not needing the vast majority of it. So, what we'll do, and I think we'll probably do this before October and before May, is we look at what little, I guess you could call them little pockets of money out there that we set aside to buy this thing. It was $5,000 cheaper than we anticipated. We put that money right back into the capital expenditure fund.
Yep. It draws back for future use.
Correct.
Yep. Correct. One of the things that I think a voter should find helpful to understand is you've got your capital budget. People can read it and understand what they're buying very clearly. But suddenly, I'm looking at this going, you know, I don't see a lot of stuff for parks here or some of the more nuanced pieces of our community and our preservation. It's because we have a separate fund for that. We're going to get to that in a minute. But the fall's the right time to look at your investment in the community, either through a capital fund or the community preservation fund. Is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Two different pots of money. They have to play differently, because they're, the use of the money is distinctly tethered to the appropriation.
Correct.
All right. So, we're going to get to that in a minute. But $2.2 million, is that about an average for a fall town meeting expenditure when you look back?
That's a great question. It might be a little bit higher.
Costs of things going up.
Costs of things are going up. I will say too, that there have been discussions about that figure actually going up for $1.35 million for a school roof project. We're actually hoping to get some good news from the MSBA that they may be pitching in for it, and that might be able to get by us some more time for that. But if not, and we should know before town meeting, the select board and the school committee have discussed amending the warrant on the floor to include an appropriation for that Placentino and Miller work.
We're, economically, I would think it's safe to say, you know, things are volatile. You know, when you, when you go out to buy a car today, you might be a little stick-a-shark to find out it's a little bit more than it was maybe a year or two ago. When you get these prices that are shown here for the voters to vote on, Frank, are these locked in? Do they, do they include, say, inflators for tariffs or things like that that may be unforeseen, that may blow that value out a little bit? What kind of flexibility do you have? Like, going back to the fire truck, for example, if it's $723,103, what did that number, which is a nice crooked number, that looks like a quote.
It is.
Is that quote locked in?
We know Chuck Cassidy got that quote, so you know it's a good one.
I do. That's why I'm using that one. So, that's, that's good for something, right? Six months usually, or three months or something?
It tends to vary. You know, the guarantee for something like a tractor would be much different than something like a fire truck. Most of the time, you know, a lot of the things that we buy are off the, you know, you had referred to as the state contract, the state bid list. So, oftentimes, you know, they have language that is there to protect municipalities from those types of price increases. But, you know, unfortunately, there's, there's not a whole lot we can... there's, there's not a whole lot we can do with some of these external factors that are at play.
So when this article is voted, they're going to vote the $2.2 million, right? So if you found that the John Deere Turbo Terrain Cut, which was supposed to be $85,994, is now coming in at $90,000, do you have to come back to Town Meeting to clean up that $4,000, or can you use a savings from another item within this approved list?
You cannot. So if, if for some reason, you know, there was a price overage or something that wasn't expected, we'd have to find an alternate funding source. Maybe, you know, you may be able to take some money out of the, you know, spend a little bit of money out of the operating budget, or maybe a reserve fund transfer.
Or come back.
Or come back to Town Meeting in the fall. We'd have to do something else. We wouldn't be able to take it from another article. Whatever that, whatever those individual articles are appropriate for, that's what they have to be spent on.
This item, I've always found the most interesting at Fall Town Meeting. It's a reflection that we're reinvesting in our community. I like to see it. It's all one-time money, and that's important to know. We'll move on to Article 10, which is a pretty good-sized item for water main replacement on Washington Street. What's our water department up to?
So one of the things that they're up to, or have been up to lately, is addressing some major issues at the intersections of Concord Street and Washington Street. So right where, sort of corner market, where the old Bertucci's used to be. And there was a major issue, I think it was the Independence Day weekend, and then we had one just a couple weeks ago, right in front of the Dunkin' Donuts, right there on Route 16.
Main failure?
Yes. And then, so I think over the course of that time, Sean Reese, our DPW director, has started assessing the problem and has come to the conclusion that we really need to do something now, or the problem's only going to get worse. It's not only impacted homes, but the businesses in the area. And so the funding source is the infrastructure account, which we all sort of pitch in too on our, on our water bills. Right now, the fund has about $2.8 million in it. It generates, I think we're expecting to generate around $1 million a year in the next couple of years. So, you know, that balance should, you know, within the next couple of years, it will be somewhat replenished. But this is a major, you know, main in town.
Critical intersection. When would the work occur if it were funded?
That's a great question. Likely this summer of 2026, right? Yes. Summer of 2026.
Okay. All right. Article 11 has an acronym, PFAS, PFAS. This is another water-related item. Talk a little bit about what this $508,000 would do. And I should remind voters that the town does have a relatively new water treatment plant off of Central Street. I believe it's doing a good job, keeping everybody's water clean. But PFAS is different, isn't it, Frank?
It is. And don't ask me to say what the acronym stands for. So I guess just to sort of take a step back, Holliston, like many municipalities, not only in Massachusetts, but across the country, are part of these class action lawsuits against manufacturers. You think of folks like 3M, DuPont, others who use this PFAS chemical that has ended up in water, again, not just in Holliston, but around the country. It's, you might hear them referred to as sort of these forever chemicals. And so these class action lawsuits have resulted in some settlement funds being distributed to cities and towns across the country. And to date, we've received around $500,000 in those settlement funds. Now, the funds have to be used for a specific purpose. They have to be used to remediate the effects of PFAS, most of which, you know, from a municipal perspective, is found in drinking water. And so this problem will be addressed in sort of three phases. And I say problem because the regulatory environment has also changed, excuse me, has also changed. So, you know, the federal government, you know, used to basically say your PFAS levels could be up here in your water, and that level has since, has come down in recent years. So we need to do something about it because we all care about our drinking water, obviously. And now we have the settlement funds to, you know, to get started on that. So the first step is really to assess the, assess the issue, what levels are out there, you know, what is sort of the scope of work that we, that we need to take care of. You might find that one well in Holliston has PFAS levels that is very different from another well in Holliston. So it's not just sort of this uniform thing. The second...
Not to cut you off, but I was under the impression, maybe mistakenly, that we were already doing PFAS testing, and that the levels that we were testing at were this, set by DEP. Is this suggesting a level that is now more intensive, or more microscopic? A little bit, just if you happen to know, I thought there was, I thought we were already doing PFAS treatment.
Yes.
Or testing, sorry.
We are doing testing. We're mandated to do testing. And then we report that, I believe it's quarterly, to the DEP.
And we're green lights. I mean, I haven't heard of any problems in Holliston. I have heard of other communities.
Yes.
Where that, those numbers are unacceptable, and they need to do some immediate remediation.
Right.
But I guess, leading into this, the message to the voter is, do we need to do this because there's a problem, or we're doing this to be preemptive and try to achieve a better microscopic understanding of what we have?
I believe, yes, that would be the latter.
So it's assessment?
Yes.
Like, what is it that we have that is currently below the levels of acceptability, which makes our drinking water safe? Is it there? Is it something we need to be concerned about? Is that safe to say?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then the second step, again, this would be down the road, would be sort of an engineered design of whatever treatment we would need to implement. And then the third step would be obviously the construction of, you know, some sort of filtration system that, you know, we'd have to basically retrofit plants for or with.
Unfair question, but I'll ask anyway. Does our new treatment plant do PFAS filtration now?
Unfair answer. I am not 100% sure, but if I had to guess, the answer would be no.
Okay. Excellent. Well, I'm sure there'll be some interest in this because public drinking water affects us all, so we'll lock into that later. No doubt on October 20th, people are going to be coming from all corners of Town of Holliston for one very, very important article. It's number 12. Would you agree?
Yes, yes, I would.
That's the sewer commission update, which is where all the, all the big shots serve.
Yep.
So do you want me to talk about that, Frank?
Speaking of stipends, right?
Do you want me to talk about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, stipend.
Go right ahead.
The sewer commission update, I plan to give a brief slide deck on what we've been up to. The biggest thing we're waiting for is a determination by the state on our recently filed application under MassWorks, which is a statewide grant that helps communities like Holliston undertake large-scale projects, usually in the sewer or water area. It's an ideal area to seek funding to offset the cost of a project that our commission believes will be in the $7 million phase. So we're waiting for an answer from the state to help us understand what kind of funding can come our way so that we can get going. There's a lot of different models, I guess you could say, depending upon the funding that we get that we can move forward on. And I'll briefly touch on that. But I think people should know, we have a sewer commission. We've been meeting almost regularly since the beginning of the year. We have filed this grant. We have a plan, thanks to the Select Board and the work done in 2023, 2024 by the engineering firm of Lombard Associates. They, they came forth with a very interesting, unique, and we think affordable, scalable sewer plan in the downtown area, which would provide sewer to about 70, I think it's 71 parcels, both commercial and residential. I'm on the record as saying it's kind of proof of concept. You know, we're going to make use of this treatment plant that's on Woodland Street, associated with the school. We're going to plug into it, use that asset, which for 20 years has been underutilized and frankly falling into disrepair. We've already spent some money to upgrade that. So using what we have, breathing a little bit of life into the downtown to hopefully generate new commercial interest and commercial business, I think is an ideal way to optimize grant funds and the infrastructure that we have. The commission's excited because they see this not only as a short-term project, right? It could probably take three to five years, but long-term, use the examples and the lessons that we've learned to possibly look at other sectors of our town for similar regional treatment plant solutions to solve sewage and really enrich our opportunity to grow commercial business. This is not a revisitation of the sewer plan that came out of Holliston's studies back 25 years ago, where it would provide sewers to everyone. I think that's off the table right now. We're, we're focused on these steps ultimately to get us to a place that can optimize areas where it's most needed. So I'll talk a little bit about that. But the sewer commission is pretty happy with the progress we've made. And hopefully by the end of the month, I think we're waiting for an official announcement on the state's award cycle. So look forward to that. And if you're not coming to Town Meeting for anything else, Article 12's all for you. I promise to keep it brief. Moving on, Frank, Article 13, the CPC. So earlier, I was talking about the CapEx, spending $2.3 million. And now we have this Article 13. Before we get here, I do have a quick question that I just remembered. Earlier in the warrant, you said that we're going to move 1 point, it's not a trick question, I promise. We want to move money into the CapEx fund. I think it was 1.5, is that correct? 1.85, right?
Yep.
But we're spending a lot more than that, aren't we?
On, from CapEx?
Yes. We're spending 2.3, about a $500,000 delta. Where's the $500,000 coming from? Is it already in the fund, or is that the windfall that you were talking about?
So it's a little bit of both. There's, there is money in the fund, in the capital expenditure fund. And then there's also the, you know, the $900,000 or so that we're, that we'll be turning back, correct?
Okay. And we don't need action, by the way, to put that 900 into the general fund, do we?
The 900,000?
From the Woodland. Is that, do we need a vote by the town to put it in, back into the capital?
So yeah, my understanding, I think towns do it differently, but in my understanding in the past for Holliston, we have not needed that, no.
Just drop it in the general.
Just drop it right back.
Got it. Okay. Sorry for the right-hand turn.
No, no, not at all.
We're going to park back at Article 13, CPC. Briefly, the Community Preservation Committee is an appointed committee by the Select Board in our town. All of us pay in on our tax bill, a relatively small, modest amount of money, into this fund for the use of community preservation, recreation, there are three prongs, and housing, I believe. Those are the three prongs. So the committee every year solicits and gets applications from groups across the town to fund their initiatives from this, from this fund. This is a very active CPC budget, 1.366 million for these projects. Every year, I would ask Travis, how much is in that fund? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, no, I do not.
It's over $4 million. So it's great to see some of our, and I'll call it a tax, some people would call it a community preservation fee. It's money coming from our pockets into this fund for our benefit. And in this case, we're using a lot of it, really cool projects. You want to get into some of them?
Yes. So the two big ones, I believe, are for the Flag Street project, oh, excuse me, the Flag School project, and the, the purchase of a property behind Town Hall. So I'll talk a little bit about the site of the Flag, former Flag School, and major kudos to our awesome Parks and Rec Director, Mark Frank, for really spearheading this project. So I think the area right now is a, sort of like, just a grassy area. I don't know if underutilized is the term that I would use, but certainly has, has potential.
It's a cap-flat space that is an improvised playing field.
Yes, I think that's a fair...
With no fences or anything to keep kids safe from the road and all that good stuff.
So this is, this, as I said, it's the site of the former Flag School, I believe, which was demolished, I want to say 2016, 2018, somewhere around there. And so the idea is to build a number of basketball courts, walking tracks, some field and track elements, some covered outdoor space, a pavilion. And so it would really not only benefit, you know, our students and the schools, but really all of our community members who, you know, can enjoy that amenity. And it's really exciting to think about, you know, that stretch of Linden going towards Woodland Street. You know, that is a very real possibility to have this, this project, if approved, developed within the next couple of years. We're looking at, within the next two years, a shared use path that would go down Linden Street towards the school campus. And then there's also another item that the CPC is taking up, sort of in its initial stages, is a bike park on Woodland. So that little stretch of Linden onto Woodland, you know, within a few years, that could be a really cool little corridor for not only our residents, but I'm sure for others who want to visit.
Promoting Mark Rich.
From out of town, exactly. And then, you know, obviously you have the rail trail right there. So there's a lot of potential there, and that's an exciting one.
Is our, are our friends at Parks going to promote or give any kind of presentation of what these facilities might look like at Town Meeting?
I've, I've checked in with the, the Chair of the CPC, and, you know, I think as per usual, they plan to, to speak to any questions or make a presentation at Town Meeting, yes.
Got it.
So that's an exciting one. The other big one on the, from the CPC side of things is the purchase of 52 Jasper Hill, which is a parcel directly behind Town Hall.
Currently for sale.
Currently for sale. The price, the price that the Open Space Committee has put on in cooperation with CPC is $415,000. So that's literally just for the purchase of the parcel. We haven't gotten to any sort of, you know, demolition of the houses on the property or anything like that. But it is exciting in that, you know, that, that parcel actually connects to another set of town-owned parcels, sort of behind that section of Washington.
Water tower.
Yes. And so there is a trailhead sort of across the police station, next to the Historical Society, that's sort of tucked away. Obviously, Route 16 is a very busy road. And, you know, parking there is, can be a challenge. But this could be, I think, the opportunity, and I think that the angle that the Open Space Committee is taking here is that, you know, this could be a new trailhead somewhere down the road. There is an existing, there is a house on the property. I don't believe it's been lived in for some time. I don't, I mean, it's in poor condition. I'm at, I don't really know if it's a full teardown or what. So that would probably need to be addressed at some point. But again, it's an exciting opportunity to connect not only to the other trail networks, existing trail networks, but create it, make it, make those trail networks a little bit more accessible with parking and an expanded trailhead area.
You know, folks in Holliston may know this, others that are new to Town may not, but that's a relatively historical area. The saying goes that before Holliston was formed, this was a large, you know, pasture area for wildlife, excuse me, livestock and so forth. And at some point, Jasper Hill was an area where people would bring their, their flock at night. And the, this town was part of Sherburne at the time. And the father said to the son, when you're safe and going down for the night, light a fire on Jasper Hill, and let me know you're safe. That's where a lot of the folklore, if you will, of the town originated. So I consider it kind of a centralized focal point for our history. When you think of...
Do you know where Jasper's, Jasper's parents lived?
They lived in Sherburne.
Oh.
I believe.
I thought, I've heard the same legend, but I heard they lived in Medfield.
Maybe it was Medfield.
Maybe it was part of Sherburne.
No, I don't know.
I only know because when I started, when I was living in Holliston, working in Medfield, I thought, oh, wow, what a really cool connection.
It could, you could, I mean, Medfield's, how old's Medfield?
1651, I want to say.
Okay. Quite likely. I always told it's Sherburne, but hey, it's all the same to me. But let me ask you this question. When it comes to the purchase, you, you used open space. So they're the, they're the sponsor. They're the ones that asked CPC for this, right?
Correct.
Over the years, Town of Holliston's done an outstanding job, like really unreal about grabbing open space when it's available, turning it back to its original design for the, for the use in greater good of our community. But I understand that the open space, like goal has to be a certain percentage of space. Is that, is that, is that how you see open space? Can you ever have too much open space? And are there any guardrails around the open spaces goals, if you will, to say, okay, enough, we need more for housing development and, you know, things like that? I'm curious, because this parcel, when I was on the board, was open for development. And obviously, that's no longer the case. He wants to sell the property. But I'm, I'm fine with the open space argument, but to what end? When are we going to get to the, to the end? Like earlier, we're talking about a percent of our operating budget should be this amount in CapEx. So what is, what is our open space goal? Unfair question, I know. But broadly speaking, Frank, as you think about what they're trying to achieve, one wonders, where does this get us?
So potentially, another unfair, unfair question, and maybe another unfair answer is, this is going to be a really, really great question, and similar questions are going to be really great to tackle, hopefully soon when the town undertakes a master planning process. So, you know, there's been a lot of chatter in town about, you know, the, the master plan that we currently have is from 1999. I have not read it in its entirety, but I heard that there's a section that even talks about paving the rail trail or the former site of the railroad tracks to bypass the traffic downtown. So obviously, we need to, to take a look at that. And I'm hopeful maybe sometime in calendar year 2026, we'll be putting aside some funding for that, to get that started. But I think that's going to be, questions like that are really going to be important to look at and incorporate into, into our master plan.
Sure. Okay. And this is under the right of first refusal. That's the whole point of this, right? As this property becomes available, what if the town, what if the property's up on, on line now is for sale?
Correct.
Can it sell before we have an opportunity to buy it?
It can. We, as we type here right now, there is not a signed purchase in, in sales, my understanding.
I see. But if it were public property, it would have right of first refusal.
That, yes, that would, yeah.
Got you.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Well, this will be a very active CPC article. Haven't seen that amount of activity in a long time. Glad to see it. Let's get that money out for the town's benefit. The School Committee Purchase, Power Purchase Agreement, which is basically a solar PV project, looks like they're getting into the green business. Talk a little bit about this.
Sure. So this is a pretty complicated space and industry, obviously. But all this article does is basically allow the, the School Committee to enter into a sort of a lease of space and also a power purchase agreement, which is referred to in the warrant also as a PPA, for a leased solar array. So there's a number of studies... also as a PPA, for a leased solar array. So, there's a number of studies, you know, primarily economic, financial, and, and related data that the school committee is going to have to look at before they would enter into this type of agreement. But this is really just giving them the authority to do that. And the reason that it's ended up on this October's warrant is, obviously, the sort of the, the federal landscape has changed in, in the past few months, and the number of incentives and tax credits that are out there will be changing come July. And so, the school committee may be interested in getting a project like this up and off the ground within the next few months. And so, we thought it would be a good decision to, and I think, I mean, obviously, the school committee thought it'd be a good idea to have this authorization to enter into that type of agreement, should the economics add up for them. There was also the thought of maybe, you know, doing some similar town projects, but in consultation with James Keast, our facilities director, some of the, the numbers just weren't working out just yet. You know, there's the, the first decision that, you know, any municipality, school, town, whatever, has to decide in a project like this is, do we want to lease this system or do we want to just pay for it outright? And that's sort of the, the analysis that, you know, that the school committee will, will have to do.
This article doesn't speak to whether or not it's going to be a ground-based canopy or roof-based system. Is that important to know?
Somewhere down the road, I think it will be. I, I believe that the article just grants them the authority to, again, enter into the lease, and then the select board, we need to sign off the, the purchasing of the power from the leased, the leased system. But somewhere down the road, I'm sure that'll factor into the school committee's decision, yes.
And the reason to do it is because it's money in the bank. You're going to get some kind of windfall, if you will, once the system's in, right? Or credits?
Credits, yeah. Or some sort of, I think commonly, it's some sort of fixed price that you would pay for electricity over the course of, I believe, the...
20 years.
25 years, 30 years, something like that. So, you know, right now, you know, I think electricity is somewhere at, you know, 15 kilowatts per hour or something like that. And so, these, these solar companies would, you know, basically say, "Okay, you'll pay X amount, but that price is going to go up for the next 27 odd years."
Right.
And again, that'll be part of the analysis that the school committee does.
The town has a ground-based system up on Marshall Street. It's, it is commissioned. It's doing its thing. We're getting some savings from that as well, correct?
Not just yet.
Oh, they have a couple...
We have not flipped the switch yet, but they look nice.
Yeah. Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we're looking at substantial savings. Probably, depending on the size, that's a 3-meg system up on Marshall. That's about, if I recall correctly, $300,000 to $400,000 a year in a benefit, right? So, the schools would be, are the schools going to get the benefit of that savings once the, once and if these systems are in, or is it split between the schools and the town? How does that work?
So, the one on Marshall Street is a little bit different in that I believe that system is actually going to be owned by a, by a private company.
Yep.
And this, if leased, the, again, I think the primary economic benefit, excuse me, would be for the discounted price of electricity or the fixed price for a, and, and when you're leasing, you're not paying for all the upfront costs of, you know, buying the system, maintenance, all that type of stuff. So, I think the economics would be a little bit different than the, than the Marshall Street project. We're still waiting to hear from the, the vendor on the specifics of how all the finances will work out. But again, I think that, you know, this, this article is really intended just to give the school committee the, the ability to enter into that agreement.
Right, great. Well, I look forward to that dialogue. Article 15, the Department of Public Works facility on Arch Street. So, I, you know, I've, I've got some history with this project, as folks may know. This article is a latest iteration of the journey that we're on. I don't think there, I don't think there's a lot of community disagreement with the need for a DPW facility. The, I think the voters have spoken, you know, they, they put an override in several years ago to build one. But it's been frustrating, hasn't it? We haven't been able to crack the nut on Cross Street and get out of Land Court. And I know the select board is under pressure because both facilities are not getting any better. They're disintegrating quickly. They were never good to begin with. So, they've come up with an idea here, huh? A different, a different twist. You want to talk a little bit about Article 15 and to the extent that there's a journey here that you want to talk and inform the, the potential voters about?
Sure. So, I guess I'll start, maybe even just before the, the Cross Street site was selected. Prior to that, I think maybe a year, maybe six months prior, the town, town meeting approved basically a referendum, non-binding article, whatever you want to call it, to, you know, encourage or authorize the town, whatever the right word is, to look for privately-owned parcels that we could put a new DPW facility on. Then Cross Street sort of fell into the mix, and the long story short on that one is it's, you know, a privately-owned parcel that the owners had not, are, you know, in arrears on their taxes. The town potentially has the opportunity to foreclose on it, but due to contamination issues that we found out in more detail after the fact, and then the land court issues that you alluded to, it's just not feasible.
We knew it was contaminated.
Fair, oh, yes. But I think that there was contamination, and then after, you know, more analysis, I think the problem was maybe a little bit worse than, than the engineers thought.
Couldn't get on the property to test it.
Also true.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Well, there was some, what happened was the property was contaminated and the owner did some work, and it's right up against Chicken Brook and an aquifer. So, there was some question about whether or not the remediation was adequate. So, there were monitoring wells on the site.
Got it.
But the owner occupants, they just ceased. They just went away a long time ago, like over a decade ago, maybe 20 years ago. And as it laid fallow without active monitoring and reporting, nobody really knew what was happening. It was certainly far from quote-unquote "clean." So, as it came to us as an option to buy it, you cannot find a better location for a DPW facility. It seemed ripe. But as it is in the land court for disposition, what little I know about the land court is it's a place where things go to die. You know, they don't come out quickly. And it's been there two to three years, right?
Yep.
So, here we are. So, now what do they want to do?
So, in the beginning of the summer, shortly before I got here, the town went out to bid for, and put out a request for proposal, RFP, for property owners in town to put up their town for sale to the town, or, excuse me, their, their lot to the, for sale to the town to consider putting up a DPW. The, the two that came back were a property on Lowland Street and a property in Hopping Brook, both within industrial parks. There were two other sites that came up. One fell out, or, excuse me, one withdrew from the process, and the other, the price was just too high. So, we just moved on quickly from that site. So, the select board took the summer to basically solicit public feedback, and on those two sites, and, you know, during the course of all that feedback and community conversations, there was a renewed look, I guess, at Arch Street, where the highway garage currently sits.
Right.
And just based on not only the feedback that we were getting, but as we were getting more cost updates from Weston and Sampson, as we were looking at a purchase price and potential issues that each of the, the Hopping Brook and Lowland Street sites posed. On Lowland Site, there, excuse me, on the Lowland Street Site, there were some, you know, residual contamination. And on the Hopping Brook Site, the, the distance of the site to sort of the core service area of the DPW was just way too far.
Right.
And so, I think logistically, the, the select board had some big operational concerns about the feasibility of that site. And so, as I, as I mentioned, there was sort of this renewed look at Arch Street, Arch Street, excuse me, again, where the current highway garage is. And given some of the changes that, right now, we think we could make to the building, we think a consolidated facility could fit at the existing Arch Street.
New construction, Frank?
New construction. And I just want to, I think it might be helpful to remind folks that, you know, we are, at this town meeting, we are talking about a site selection. We are not talking about the size of the building, or, you know, how big the building is going to be, you know, in 10 years or five years, or, you know, is there room for expansion? We're literally talking about where to build the building, and then we'll be back at sometime, you know, maybe in the spring to talk about actually passing a voter-approved exclusion for, for the actual project at site.
So, this funding is to study this?
Correct.
Right.
So, you know, we estimate that the, the design engineering, that is the technical term, basically, you know, bid-ready documents that you can take out, put out to bid, and, you know, have be ready to build, we estimate that'll be somewhere between 2.6 to $3 million based on estimates that we've received from Weston and Sampson.
Well, I commend the select board because obviously in our town, putting anything anywhere is always going to run into somebody questioning it or, or flat-out opposition. And certainly, when you talk about neighborhoods or commercial spaces, there's a trade-off for everything. The idea that we originally had was to make use of town-owned property for us. It's free. That saves a lot of money in the ups, on the upside. I follow briefly the idea of, you know, the bids and looking at private property. It's enticing to look at some of them, but at the end of the day, when you've got to pay, you know, something that looks like a seven-figure number on top of the construction, the taxpayers have to really ask themselves, "Is that a really good use? Couldn't we find town-owned land to do this?" So, if Arch Street is it, I, I recall looking at the plans, there's going to have to be some trade-offs and some modifications because it's not a very big site. It's a good site, it's a good local site. It's obviously been embedded in that neighborhood, and people are accustomed to its, its being a neighbor. I, I think it'd be a wonderful solution, but it's, it's time to do something because having walked through those facilities several times, the people that work for us in water and public works, they do a great job. And we think about them a lot when there's, you know, a foot of snow on the ground. But they go back to that place for respite and for, you know, re, retooling, if you will, and getting the equipment ready. And when you look at the environment that they have to work, and it's, it's pretty, pretty bad. One of the roofs, I recall, had an open hole in it. It's, these facilities were not built for modern DPW use, and this community Consolidated Public Works, probably about 10 years ago, they used to have siloed departments. It's time to bring them together, make them efficient, operational, and work best for our community. So, I commend the select board. Hats off. I hope this goes through, and hopefully the community will see the path that, of hard work, I think, that the, the select board did to make sure that the public got a lot of input, and they're making a good, responsible decision here to look at Arch Street. As we get to the back end here, Frank, a few more, the zoning bylaw, Accessible Dwelling Units. These are the articles at the back of the article, back of the warrant, that are designed to keep people in their seats because they all came for this, didn't they, Frank?
Much like the sewer commission, yes.
Yes, no, no, that's not true, Frank. That's not true. They come for the sewer commission. Let's talk about the Planning Board's Accessible Dwelling Unit.
So, basically, the story with this one is the town was very proactive in trying to adopt these zoning bylaws that would comply with the newly-passed state legislation that would basically allow for accessible dwelling units, ADUs, by right. The guidance from the Attorney Generals have shifted a little bit since the, the legislation was passed and since we passed our bylaws probably last year or the year before.
Yeah.
So, I think this is just a little bit of cleanup that the Planning Board has proposed. We've actually seen a couple of these permitted or at least proposed. A lot of folks who are looking at, looking at maybe a garage or a room over the garage and turning it into an accessible dwelling unit. So, it'll be interesting to see how this progresses in the coming years.
I think it's a, a small but meaningful step in the direction of a, a housing solution. I, you know, I can't say that, given the housing pressures that the next generation is looking at, would find this to be relief, but it, it is some form of relief, and it does use existing infrastructure in a way that I think is responsible. So, I'm excited to see how it does in Holliston, and we'll see if the Planning Board has any presentation here that will really keep people in their seats. All the way to Article 17. So, we have a couple of the back end. I won't bother you with these. These are really housekeeping, industrial zoning changes, a road acceptance, a citizen's petition at the end. Just real briefly, without getting into the citizen's petition, all citizen's petitions are non-binding. Is that correct? They don't bind the boards to make changes. They're advisory.
They're advisory. That's a great question. I would definitely need to, to confirm that with, with Liz Greendale. So, that's a fair point.
The, the town meeting will be held at 7 o'clock, as Frank said, on Monday, October 20th. Babysitting's available for folks who may want to bring their children. Before we let you go, Frank, first I want to say thank you for coming in.
Oh, thanks for having me.
I'm proud to have you in as a guest, your first time coming in, talking about it. We'll do this again, likely when the snow melts in the spring. Town Hall is a very vibrant place. Having served this town for several years, I've seen a lot of people come and go. It's a wonderful place to work. I'm so happy you're there, giving them great leadership. Tell us a little bit, if you can, any update on filling Kathleen Buckley's important position as an assistant town manager. I know she was here for a while, went on to greater things, but you've been looking for a replacement. How's it going?
We have, and Kathleen is sorely missed, not only by our staff, but a number of the boarding committees and volunteers that, that she worked with. And I saw her actually last Friday briefly, and it was like, just like old times. The joke was like, "We only worked together for a few months, but it felt like we had worked together for five years."
Yeah.
So, we are interviewing candidates now, and hopefully we'll have some good news either right before or right after town meeting.
All right, great.
So, yeah, that's, that's ongoing.
I bet you can't wait.
For town meeting? I love town meeting. You know, I'm very...
Pushing that aside.
Oh, yes.
It's the CRs now.
Yes, yeah. HR, you know, you really want someone who's good. It's a, it's a very important hire. So, we're taking our time with it. And like I said, hopefully we'll have, we'll have good news soon.
Thank you so much, Frank. It's great to see you. Welcome to Holliston. I know you're going to have many great years with them. I'm looking forward to it. Folks, we're wrapping up here. I want to thank you for joining us as we went through this upcoming town meetings warrant. As you can tell, there's a lot of fun stuff in there. Hopefully, it's enough to bring you out that evening and join us for some good community dialogue on October 20th, 7 p.m. Meanwhile, pleasure to meet you this evening. Thanks for spending your time. We'll see you next time on Just Thinking.